All right, I'd like to call the order of the Waukesha County Council meeting for March 12th, 2019. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Red Brown?
Here.
Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Tyler Byrd? Todd Donovan?
Here.
Carol Frazee?
Here.
Sut Paul Sidoo?
Would you all rise and join me in the flag salute?
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A couple of announcements, please turn off your cellphone, and if you'll be handing out paperwork to council members, please give one copy to the clerk for office files. Before we go much further, I'd just like Ms. Dana Brown Davis to stand up and accept our appreciation for the work that you did on the homeless shelter.
Would you clap? Did they get, she got the card?
And?
The card?
In addition to that, we also have one for Jennifer, and we also have cards, and I'm just waiting for another two signatures for the cards. So thank you very much for the hard effort. With that, first item up is minutes. We have four sets of minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Mr. Buchanan moves approval. Mr. Donovan, second. So I can see this will be a fast night. Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes five to zero with Mr. Byrd and Mr. Sidoo excused. Mr. Sidoo? Okay, Mr. Sidoo? Let the record show, Mr. Sidoo is here at 7:03. Next item up is a special prosecutor, sorry, special presentation from prosecuting attorney Eric Ritchie to share his platform for reform.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Eric Ritchie. I'm the new Waukesha County prosecutor, and I want to thank you all for having me here today. I am presenting today my vision. This is a document, and I believe you all have it in front of you as I ask you to hand it out.
Mr. Ritchie, we can actually hear you on the microphone.
Down and do it.
Is that better?
Somebody here might help.
Can you all hear me now? I think the microphone may have been turned off. Can you hear me now, everyone?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that's better.
All right, sorry about that. Again, this is my vision statement. This is something that I've been working on for some time. Started working on it during the campaign. I had a number of people helping me with that, including Heather Flaherty, who just stepped forward, and Lisa McShane, who's in the back there. Since they began helping me back during the campaign, I've had a number of folks work on it, including Barry Buchanan, who is, of course, right here with us, Karen Frakes over here, and many other people in the prosecutor's office, public defender, and also a few other community members. So again, this is my vision statement, and I wanted to address what I'm doing here in the Waukesha County Prosecutor's Office. The first thing I'd like to talk about is victims, and the reason why I want to talk about victims is because we have not talked about victims in our discussion enough. Victims are of primary importance in the Waukesha County Prosecutor's Office. We have a Victims Bill of Rights that are written in our statutes, and we in the Prosecutor's Office take that very seriously. The Victim Bill of Rights talks about the basics, making sure that we have information to victims when we're working on crimes and making sure that they know what's going on with their cases. But I'll tell you what, we're going further than that. We believe that it's important to have trauma-informed discussions, making sure that we use compassion, and that we care for each and every victim that comes before us. I also want to mention that in the past, we've had a lot of troubles speaking to victims. One of the problems we've had is because we've been short of staff. We're finally up to staff. We finally have four professionals that make sure we get all the information we need to victims. And from here going forward, we're going to keep everyone informed. Now, this is something that we've talked about quite a bit during the campaign, and I want to continue talking about it. I believe that drug use is a health concern, and it's something that we need to look at that way as opposed to fully looking at it as a criminal justice problem. True that we have a lot of collateral crimes that come along with drugs, and some of those crimes are very serious, but when we're talking about simple possession cases, these people need treatment and probation instead of incarceration. This is something I feel very strongly about. I also want to briefly mention Drug Court, and the reason why I want to talk about that is because Drug Court is one of our best programs that we have to make sure that people get treatment and make sure that they get sober. There was some complaints about Waukesha County Prosecutor's Office being, or not using best practices, and that is simply not true. We've had a national evaluation done, and they've vindicated the Prosecutor's Office. They'll tell you clearly when you see the reports that we have been using best practices. I also want to tell you that we have expanded the types of cases that can be admitted into Drug Court. So we're going to be expanding the program. It's something that I believe is important, and we're doing it. Finally, there was one valid criticism about the Prosecutor's Office, and that valid criticism was the delay that we had getting people admitted. And that has been taken care of. In the past, we had a delay of maybe a month, maybe even longer, and I'll tell you that since taking office, I've streamlined the process. We now take only six days to get someone admitted into Drug Court, and that I'll call a success. Right, so bail and pretrial incarceration. Actually, I missed, skipped a slide. Let me see if it's still here. I did. Mental Health Court, thank you. Sorry about that. Mental Health Court's been a fantastic program. It's been working very well. For those of you who don't know, what we do is we forgive a person's crimes when they get mental health treatment. And sometimes, that's the only way that we can get someone, the only way we can keep someone from being incarcerated. And I'll tell you, I don't think it's fair to be housing people with mental illnesses in our jail. We are doing, we're expanding that program as well. That's designed for misdemeanors in District Court, but we've been handling some felonies in that Mental Health Court program. And whenever there is a crime that we believe can be safely handled in Mental Health Court, and they need that treatment, we're going to be moving them in that direction. We've been successful doing that, and we're going to continue to do so. Now, bail and pretrial incarceration. So the goal, of course, is to reduce the number of people that are being held in our jail when they don't need to be. And it's not fair to hold people just because they're poor. For that reason, since I've been elected, I've been asking that, I've been recommending bail lower than what we have recommended before. Going forward, I want to tell you that I support the Incarceration Prevention Reduction Task Force program for pretrial services. What they're working on is both a reminder for court appearances as well as a risk assessment tool. The reminder is an absolute must. That's going to help, it's going to give us another tool to make sure that people appear in court when they're otherwise low-risk people to reoffend. The risk assessment tool is also something that's going to be useful for our judges to determine bail. And I know that there's been some concerns about, and maybe some criticisms about, the risk assessment tool, but I believe that we're going to be able to work through those and make sure that it is a helpful program. Bail jumps. We have been using bail jumps less frequently since October, and the reason we're doing that is because people fail to appear for a lot of reasons, and we want to make sure that people are treated fairly. When we file, a bail jump, for those of you who don't know, is a charge that prosecutors can file for a person just failing to appear for court. And when we do so, and when we file those charges, it can be looked at as piling on. And there's, sometimes we just don't need to do that. So we're giving people the grace of a six weeks delay in filing. If someone fails to appear, we will not file a bail jump charge. If they can reappear in our courts within six weeks, we believe that's more fair, and we believe that gets people re-engaged into the criminal justice system after failing to appear. They feel more capable of coming back. I've been hearing that it has been working, according to people in the public defender's office. Sentencing alternatives. Now, this is a critical tool that prosecutors have to reduce jail bed days. Alternatives include electronic home monitoring, work release, community service, and work crew. And we believe that this is, these are programs that we have to use here in Waukesha County if we're going to reduce the number of people that are held in our jail. There's also DOSA. DOSA is Drug Sentencing Alternatives, and this is another program that's statutory, and this has been working very well. I've directed my office to embrace DOSA as a program to use. It keeps people out of jail and requires that people do treatment, both with prison-based DOSAs as well as residential DOSAs. And both programs have been working very well. Felonies and misdemeanors. This is something that I've talked about quite a bit during the campaign, and there are a number of felonies that we believe can be handled better as misdemeanors, specifically the simple drug use. If we reduce those charges to misdemeanors, we can ensure that these people get probation and get treatment. And it's so often that these people, especially when they're brand-new to the criminal justice system, they do not need the felony label. It's not helping them, and it certainly doesn't help us. There are other programs such as first-time offender waivers. First-time offender waivers are statutory, that allows a person to feel the criminal justice system to a lesser degree than they otherwise might. Sometimes, a person doesn't need the hammer of the criminal justice system. Sometimes, they need a lighter touch to get the message. And we believe that this is an appropriate program for us to be using. Again, my office embraces this program. Finally, compromise of misdemeanors. This is something that can be done in District Court. When the victim is made whole by the defendant, there are many cases we can just dismiss. We believe that's inappropriate uses of our justice system. Now, diversion alternatives. This is something I'm really excited about, and this is something that we're going to be talking about more. I'm probably going to be coming back to you at some point and talking to you about this program possibly needing funding. This is LEAD program. Many of you, I'm expecting that some of you folks have heard of this. This is a program that started in Seattle in 2011. It's law enforcement assisted diversion, and it is something that's been working very well down there. In fact, since it started in Seattle, there have been many communities across the country that have copied it. The idea is that law enforcement comes across a person out in the field, and they see that they're committing a crime, and at that point in time asks them, would you like treatment and diversion, or would you like the normal track of going to jail? Well, people at that time often decide that they would like treatment and diversion. Law enforcement helps them get the program into the program, and the prosecutor then holds the charges to keep them on track and make sure that they want, that they continue to do the treatment. It's, again, something that's been working very well in other communities. It's something that our community deserves. It's something that our community wants. I can tell you that Sheriff Bill Elfo has been excited about this program. We've been talking about it for over a year. Chief Dave Dahl wants to use the program. We have, I currently have a transition team, and I think you may have seen that in my document that I provided you, with the number, again, the number of community members. We're going to be changing that to an advisory committee. We have scheduled a meeting next month with the people who put the program together in Seattle, so we can learn what's working and how to put this in our community, because, again, I really believe that our community deserves this. Reentry. Oh geez, I'm skipping. Boy, okay. Diversion alternatives, juvenile incarceration, right. So juvenile incarceration, this is something that we also need to talk about, and you may have heard that our juvenile detention has been at zero for a number, well, a number of times over the last year. And that's something that's been really impressive. People have been trying to figure out exactly why that is. A lot of folks want to take credit. I can tell you that the Prosecutor's Office would love to take credit for that, but I think the real reason is the schools. The schools have been stepping up and making sure that people, that the kids are kept in school, kept engaged, and not sending what might be petty crimes to the Prosecutor's Office or to law enforcement. And this is something that's something, this is something that's very important to us, because I would like to make sure that we keep detention as low of a number as possible, hopefully at some point zero. Now, reentry. Another program that I'm excited about, I think that there are times when people have paid their debt to society, a fair amount of time has passed, and these people do not need to have criminal convictions on their record. We don't need them to have that, and it certainly doesn't help them. It doesn't help them get jobs, and as you all know, when a person has a job, they're less likely to commit another crime. So because of that, I support liberally applying the vacating and sealing of their records. Something that we've been doing in my office for a long time, but I, again, support it liberally. I also support legislation that's going through our House as well as the Senate currently. It's called the New Hope Act. The New Hope Act is designed to allow more cases to be, more types of cases, to be vacated than ever before. And I think that that will help people in the long run to make sure that our people can work. Along with that is licensing. As you all know, having a driver's license here in Waukesha County is very important. We have many rural areas. If you can't drive, you can't work. And the legislature's working on that as well. They're working on decriminalizing driving while suspended in the third degree. I support that as well. But beyond that, my office supports that. My office has been dismissing driving while suspended in the third degree charges for a long time. Of course, when a person, that happens when a person shows up licensed. And I think that we need to be helping people learn how to get their driver's license back. That's something that I think as government, we should be working on. I know there are people in the community that are working on that, but I believe the Waukesha County, that Waukesha County should be working on that as well. All right, data collection and transparency. This is something that I think you all know has been kind of an ongoing problem for many agencies within Waukesha County. The Vera Institute made a report to all of us about how criminal justice has been doing, and I think you all know that they were hampered by not getting good data. Now, our office has been one of the bigger problems there. Our current data collection system was designed in 1984, and I'm not coming to you asking you for more money right now because you've already given it to us. We are going to be purchasing a new data collection system, a new case management system this year. We're going to start in April, looking at the different products that are on the market to make sure that we collect the best data so that we can provide how we're doing to the community, because the community deserves to know. This is all part of government transparency, collecting the data, providing that information to the community. So how are we going to provide that information to the community? Well, I'm here today. I'm talking to you about my vision. I am also going to have community roundtables, where we're going to be talking to people about what they believe is important. I have a scheduled event with the Riverdust Collective on an Ask Me Anything. And I can tell you that, oh, and along with this, I will be, we are developing a website where we are going to talk about achievements and things, other things that we have been working on. Transparency in government, as you know, is important. Diversity, equity, and inclusion. This is based a lot on data, and I can tell you, if we see that our data, if I see that our data shows that our practices are creating any disparity, that's something I'm going to want to change. And that's going to be something that we're going to have to, again, collect this data to see exactly where we are. And at least that's the way I'm seeing it currently, but if there are people that otherwise see what we are doing and believe that we are creating disparity by the work that we do, I want to know. And that's something that we will talk about, because I will not accept any racism, or any pounding or preying upon the weak, or the underprivileged in the Waukesha County Prosecutor's Office. Hiring. Hiring is, you probably know this, but the Waukesha County Prosecutor's Office is a little bit different than the rest of government. We are not under the same requirements for handling things, or handling hiring practices the same way. However, I believe that hiring needs to be fair, and to do so, I've implemented some union protocols to make sure that our hiring processes are fair. I also believe that diversity is something that should always be considered in hiring. Diversity is always something that should be considered in retention as well as promotions. And I can tell you that we're doing that currently in the Waukesha County Prosecutor's Office. All right, here's something that I'm really excited about. Learning, training. As you all know, the best way to do our jobs, the best of our abilities is to understand our jobs, and that has to do with training. So when I first became elected, I asked one prosecutor to be a training deputy, and that deputy prosecutor has taken on a huge task of training our office, setting up a schedule for training, as well as training other folks within the law enforcement community. For example, we had an entire office training for implicit bias in February. Judge Montoya Lewis came in, spent three hours speaking to our entire office. I can't recall our entire office ever coming together for a training in the last 25 years. And this is, it was really quite a program that she put on. I recommend it to everyone. Not only did she do a nice job, but our prosecutors received it well. It was a first step, because that's, we need, we're going to need more discussions about implicit bias. I can also tell you that the training deputy's been working on diversity and equity. He's also talking about trauma-informed practices. And I mentioned that he has been working with law enforcement, and he's done that to quite a degree. He's logged 12 hours of training the Waukesha County Sheriff's Office. That's not preparation, that's actual training, 12 hours. Other agencies are asking to see him. And right about now, I can just say at some point, that guy deserves a raise. So this is a living document. This is something that, like I said, we've been working on for some time. It's, we're trying to put together our best practices, trying to make sure that we are treating people as fairly as we can. But I understand that there will be new ideas, new procedures, new ways of doing things, and when we learn about those new ideas, and when we decide to make those policies, we will inform you. That I promise you. So that's the end of my presentation. Do you have any questions or comments?
Mr. Donovan?
First, I'd just like to thank you for the presentation. It's unlike anything we've ever heard from the Prosecutor's Office, which is very refreshing. I mean that in the most positive way. Two things. The first, the LEAD, the law enforcement assisted diversion, there was something about funding. Would that be in the Prosecutor's Office, Sheriff's Office? What kind of?
So what I see there is not so much the Prosecutor's Office. What I'm talking about is going to be treatment. Treatment is something that our community is going to need more of, so that we can make sure that people are treated within the community. I know that we're working on the Triage Center, and we have plans to keep that fully staffed, and that's something that's going to need to be talked about. But with all the treatment that I'm looking at, I expect that we're going to be needing more treatment facilities, and that's something I'll be talking to the county council about, the state of Washington, and also local donors. I think it's going to take all of us getting together to make sure that this happens.
And then the second thing is more, I don't know if it's an observation or a question, but you mentioned juvenile incarceration, having a goal at zero, and how we've been approaching zero. We're actually hearing that we're going the opposite direction. The last couple of reports we've heard on that is, there's been kind of a surprising uptick. And so, but I would like the goal of zero, but we seem to be moving the other direction.
I agree. I know what you're talking about, yes.
Ms. Brenner and then Ms. Frazee.
You sort of talked about it, but I'm having trouble understanding how we're ever going to have adequate treatment for people with mental illness, because less and less people are going into those fields anyway. And I personally don't believe treatment is just somebody doing something. It's got to be effective. It's got to, it's got to be people who really love what they do and do a great job. And other than that, it's just going to be more of the same. So how are you going to change that? It seems enormous.
Right, so I guess the specific thing that I was asking for, or talking about treatment for was LEAD, and that's going to be more drug treatment. However, we do use mental, and you're right, yes, we do have dual diagnoses. I'm not going to, you're right, I can see your face. But yeah, Mental Health Court has been using treatment facilities to make sure that mental health treatment has been given to the clients that go there. And do we need more? I'm sure we do. And how we're going to get people interested in the programs? I can't answer that, but I do want to see, I do want to see more.
Okay.
Ms. Frazee.
We talked earlier about how the ages 18 to 24, how they're not responding as well to Drug Court. Are you finding other avenues for them for treatment?
No, so that's something, that's a, that's a real good question. So the 18 to 24-year-old court is something that's being done in other parts of the country. It's young adult court. And the idea is that these, that the people in that age are not responding well, in Drug Court, normal Drug Courts. The best people, the people that are doing the best in Drug Court are the older folks, the people that have actually gone through using drugs, maybe gone through the life of drugs, and they're tired of it, and they want help. They want treatment. The young adults are still excited about drugs, and they respond to different motivations. So that's why there's been young adult courts that have sprung up across the country. That's something that we will be talking about within the community of criminal justice, and seeing if we can get a program like that. We will be talking about that more. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks.
This is Sidoo.
First of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
I think this is great, and I can see that your presentation is a breath of fresh air. I may not have walked with you during your election, but the end of the day, the public services, what we are going to do in future. And I think that your presentation or your commitment in front of the community and your supporters have helped you, that we have come a long ways from lock them up, problem solved. And we are suffering because of that thought for many decades. And we are starting a new chapter in our county, and it shows that all the eight months of campaign, you have been listening to the residents, and that's a great thing. You know, it's not only about winning, it's about what you do. And this is, this is a great start. And I'm so pleased that just in last few months, we have been giving so much money to Linden Schools, so much money to Blaine Schools, and all this, and you have shown us the proof, which we have been watching as well, that investment, early investment, actually is much more effective than the investment when they are 25, 30 years old. It's better to catch them when they're eight, 10, 12 years old and get that going. And I really look forward to more better things from the Prosecutor Department. I think the whole community is looking forward to that change, and the map, roadmap you have presented, I personally very happy and congratulate you for that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Ms. Frazee.
One more thing. You were talking about the One more thing, you were talking about the four professionals that you have just for victims.
Yes.
Was it zero before, or was it just whoever could deal with the victims? Or, I mean, this is impressive, that there's constant communication.
Right. So, we had two people working in that system before, when we were, we were very understaffed. We couldn't get all the messages that were necessary to victims, when we were, just continuing a case, needs a victim contact, we weren't able to get that done. And now, we're able to get that done.
Thank you for that.
And thank you from myself. First, congratulations on winning the position, and second, thank you for the roadmap, and I look forward to how it unfolds and wish you every success.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up is open public, sorry, public hearings, and we have one special public hearing, and then we have the open session. Audience members who wish to address the council during a public hearing are asked to sign up at the back of the room prior to the meeting. The council chair will ask those who've signed up to form a line at the podiums. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record and optionally include city of residence. Speakers will be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of time limits and inform speakers when they have 30 seconds left to conclude comments. When a large group of individuals supports the same position on an issue, the selection of one or two representatives to speak on behalf of the entire group is encouraged. And when using the microphone, please speak close enough that you can hear yourself on the speakers. This will ensure that everybody else can hear your comments as well. So, the first public hearing we have tonight is, in fact, the only public hearing, is an ordinance granting Deer Creek Water Association a franchise and the right and privilege and authority thereunder to locate, set, erect, lay, construct, extend, support, attach, connect, maintain, repair, replace, enlarge, and operate and use facilities in, on, upon, over, and under, along, across the, through the franchise area to allow for the provision of water services. Mr. Donovan.
I think that was tabled in committee. Do we still, no?
We can still have a public hearing.
Okay.
We're still going to have the public hearing.
Gotcha.
Yeah, if in doubt, trust the clerk.
That's why I was looking at her, not you.
That's a smart move. All right, first up is M.B. Torres, and then Aubrey Stargell, and then George Chu. If you'd like...
Some of them weren't here for that.
Then you'd want the next session.
Open session, who's next?
Does anybody else wish to speak on the Deer Creek ordinance? Seeing none, we'll close the public... Oh, sorry, we do, we have one person. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on the Deer Creek ordinance? Ms. Brenner, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we had some unanswered questions, so this was tabled in committee. We're going to be waiting to get those answers. Thanks.
I'm sorry if I'm going to be raising questions that you've already asked and are waiting for answers for, but, you know, I certainly support water associations. I'm a little concerned about this franchise. I remember I wasn't happy when the county agreed to it to begin with in general. I think that we're giving up a whole lot, and we're giving the water association, and I'm not picking on Deer Creek, it's whoever who had come in here. We're giving them a lot of power and not asking enough questions. And my concern is, we're really focused on things like not interfering with road passage and getting approval from building standards, and nobody's asking questions about the ecological impacts that are going on, how we're affecting critical areas, including wellhead protection areas and critical aquifer recharge areas and habitat conservation areas and wetlands. And I don't know if that's even being, going to be questioned here, or if they're vested to some prior contract, but it's a big concern for me. And I'm seeing here that we're, you know, Deer Creek has the power of eminent domain, and that's a pretty strong power. And I just want to make sure that whatever happens is being done in a very open and transparent manner, and to the extent that there's going to be ecological impacts, and I can't imagine that there aren't, that the public's going to know about it and have an opportunity to comment on it, and that it'll be considered. Yeah, you were talking about the result, the rights that you're giving are just so broad, and there were things in here where, like if there was a conflict or a question that things would be interpreted on behalf of the water association instead of the county code. And that just wasn't hitting me right, so I'd really like to see some clarifying language in here about which environmental standards apply and how they're going to be imposed, and what rights of public notice there are going to be, and...
Time.
What we're going to do to ensure that we meet no net loss standards. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to this particular issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and my understanding is that you, this had been held in committee, is that correct?
Yeah, it was held in committee.
Okay. Mr. Sodur.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, is that the franchise agreement does not give any special status to a water association, that they don't have to follow the critical areas ordinance, comp plan, or anything. They are, like even county, if the county wants to go build a building, they have to go get permits, like anybody else. And I don't see that they, since they got a franchise, now they're exempt from the county code. They are like any other organization, private business, or anybody wanting to do something, or any big corporation or small corporation. So, I don't see that we are providing them some kind of special privilege here, that you can go and do things which are beyond the county code. So, I just wanted to make it clear, that's what, at least my understanding is.
Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, well, I just, I understand what Wendy said, and I feel like there are quite a few people in the community that felt, myself included, that a lot, some of the language is way too vague, and we do need to clean it up, so stay tuned.
Yep.
Any further discussion on this topic? Seeing none, we'll close on this topic and go to the open session. During this open session, audience members can speak to the council on any issue not scheduled for public hearing. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record, and optionally they include city of residence. Speakers will be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of the time limits and inform the speakers when they have 30 seconds left to conclude. And if you have anything to give to council members, please make sure you give a copy to the council clerk. Thank you. And I just ask that people line up at the next podium, so if you'd like to move forward to the next podium, and then when this person finishes speaking, then you'll be able to start speaking. Go ahead.
Oop, I just lost my stopwatch here. Alex McLean, I live in Bellingham, Washington, next to a creek. It's interesting that Sat Paul mentioned that critical areas ordinances are not optional, unless perhaps you're a local government agency, such as the school district. I'm here tonight, I really don't have any idea what I'm going to say. I've gone through this spiel six times in front of city council, five times in front of the school board, and it is a massively daunting task to take on the Bellingham School District. I will tell you that. From the past nine months of attempting to get any traction on this issue, there has been precisely zero reaction. And it's difficult, because there's a lot of interdigitated relationships, and, you know, people look at the school district as being this cuddly, wuddly entity that everybody loves and adores. And in fact, I do love and adore them. They do great work. But man, they are parking 70 diesel buses fully within the critical areas buffer for Waukam Creek. This creek is, what, 100 feet away from this building? It's behind City Hall here, and then if you go up to 1801 James Street, where they're parking more than 70 diesel buses fully within the creek buffer. They have been there for 63 years, since 1956, and they refuse to move. The Bellingham Greenways program has engaged with them and said, please, can we do something? Do you want a million bucks? This was 10 years ago. The York Neighborhood Association also engaged with them and said, you know, we would love to build housing and have a proper setback, perhaps a trail on this four-acre parcel. Housing and the environment, I mean, right now, this is the critical juncture of our time. And the Public Works Department also approached them, they want to do an assessment, like they don't even know what the FEMA floodplain boundary is there, because there's not enough room to do anything. They're 25 to 40 feet away from the creek. They're spraying pesticides through the fence and then putting a little marker up saying, hey, employees, don't go near the fence because we just sprayed in this buffer zone. These are facts. These are things that have been happening since 1953. It is 2019. We got orca whales out there pushing their dead babies around like these disgusting macabre balloons, and we have to stare at them on the TV. We know that there are salmon in this creek that are listed.
30 seconds, please.
I just, I can't describe for you how mind-blowing it is and what a massive hurdle it is to go up against these guys. I mean, the reason I'm here and why no other local environmental groups are here is because they all have contracts with the school district. I love these groups, I'm a good hippie. I'm going to still volunteer for them, I'm still going to, you know, donate, but the head of city council is married to someone on the school board. Eric Ritchie is married to someone on the school board. It is gnarly. I'm asking for an intervention and some help. Thank you.
My name is Michael Chivario. I am four years retired from working for the Waukam County Parks Department. I can tell you, retirement is a wonderful idea of Western civilization. However, I loved my 20 years working for the Waukam County Parks Department. I'm here to talk about the proposed changes to the Maple Creek Campground in Silver Lake Park. I am intimately familiar with that campground. I worked there, I built one of the camp loops with the parks crew, I installed water lines and power lines, I repaired the old, the old pedestals that need to be replaced that this proposal is going to do, but I'm really concerned about some particular aspects of the proposal. I understand that the proposal has been years in the making, and that Mr. McFarland and Mr. Lamb, who are here tonight, have put a lot of, a lot of effort into this, and I don't impugn their motives or their thoroughness one bit, except in the area, as far as I know, there's not been any public input on this process. I saw no notice, and I only learned about this last week because a person I know who lives out in the county, who frequents Silver Lake Park alerted me that they talked to someone out there. Oh, really? I hadn't heard anything. So, in any case, I have a different approach than, than this proposal proposes, and the main thing I'm concerned about is that I think the prudent thing to do in this case is to stop the letting of a timber-cutting contract, put it on hold. I don't know what you guys can do to help that, but I want you to do what you can do to put that timber-cutting contract on hold until there's been more public process about the proposed changes. So far as I know, there has been no public meeting, as I said. The part of the proposal that involves removing more than 25% of the 2,200 trees in the campground, that's 600 trees. There are a lot of issues with the planned use and potential abuse of resources in that area of the park, ranging from the questions of need to build structures and vehicle capacity to environmental damage to long-term maintenance costs that I think also need to be revisited. Once a contract is let to cut these trees down, it's almost like the die is cast, and it's really hard to go back.
30 seconds, please.
I know it probably feels frustrating to the parks administrators to think, oh, geez, we put years into this, and now this guy who just heard about this two weeks ago is trying to put a stop to it. I'm not trying to put a stop to it. I want there to be more public process, more input. In my experience working for parks, the best projects that we did were the projects that had a lot of public involvement and where the entire parks department had their, had their say and their input, and those were the best successes.
Fine.
Thank you.
I just have a question.
Ms. Brenner.
Michael, could you leave your phone number? We had a discussion in committee today, and I would like you to listen to that discussion, and then I'd like to talk to you about it.
Where do I do that?
With Dana.
Sure.
Thank you.
Again, please move forward. No, no, but move forward to the podium. Sorry. Please.
All right, good evening. I'm M.B. Torres. After spending many hours with unsheltered of our community this last month, I've heard stories that upended any preconceived ideas I held about my unsheltered neighbors. It also upended any preconceived ideas that my city and my county was prepared to take care of its residents, sheltered or not. I've been researching on the internet about how other cities and countries are handling the homeless crisis. It didn't take me long to find article after article about how the homeless crisis is being tackled in other areas. The one plan that keeps on reappearing over and over with success stories is the Housing First approach. In the Housing First approach, housing itself is seen as the mean to end homelessness, whereas traditional plans to end homelessness require a person to complete a mental health program or drug or alcohol treatment program before receiving housing. The Housing First Plan makes housing the first step in the process rather than the last. The Housing First Plan was adopted by the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs in 2012, and I quote, "By providing the stability of a home, folks can improve their health outcomes, they can get back to work, kids do better at school." All sorts of things occur when folks have access to housing. In Utah, the Housing First Strategy began in 2005. By 2015, homelessness was reduced by 91%, 91%. Housing First leads to lower rates of return to homelessness and less cost to the public in the form of ER visits and incarceration. Austin, Texas, by using the Housing First Strategy, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development announced that it has ended veteran homelessness. They began the program in 2014 and made that announcement in August 2016. Finland has been using the Housing First Strategy since 2007. They provided their people who are homeless with a stable, permanent home, then provide them with the help and support they need, whether it be overcoming addiction, learning new skills, additional training, or education. It is best said by Ralph Nunez, President, New York City Institute for Children and Poverty. Shelters have become a surrogate for low-income housing in America. We must implement affordable housing options, mental health care, and drug treatment facilities if we're going to resolve this crisis. We need help here in Bellingham. Thank you.
Okay.
Jamie Douglas, Bellingham. I came out tonight to hear Eric Ritchie present this vision that he had for the Prosecutor's Office. Like many of you, I think, I was very impressed, and... And, and I'm glad to hear that he has a vision to move forward and, and tackle that from the prosecutor's office. Criminal justice, though, is like a three-legged stool. And if you only have one leg, you don't have a stool, you have a stick. Without mental health treatment and without drug treatment, a lot of what he has to do there is going to not get the kind of traction to get the results we want. So I'm left here with a question that I wanted to share with you, and that is, in these areas of mental health and drug treatment, who's going to be coming forward with a reciprocal vision for what we can do here in Watcom County to provide these kinds of opportunities for treatment that are desperately needed? Not only as it comes through the court system, but just as you heard here about homelessness, while I agree that we should house the homeless first, they are in need of drug treatment and mental health treatment as well. If they weren't having those problems when they became homeless, they usually are having them because of being homeless. So I'm, I'm left with a question in my mind, where do we get the vision for how we do that here in Watcom County? I don't expect you guys have an answer, but I hope that we can all work together to try to find one. Thank you.
I'm Aubrey Stargell. I'm at 7640 Bear Ridge Way in Maple Falls, and I'm here to speak in favor of the proposal for management at the Maple Creek Campground. I only live about a mile from this site, and I'm very familiar with it. Maple Creek defines my west property boundary. I also am the log buyer for Great Western Lumber in Everson, so the last remaining sawmill in Watcom County. I've looked at this proposal on the ground and found it to be careful and responsible proposal. Previous commenters have talked about affordable housing, and we like to think we play at least a partial role in that, in that goal. Another speaker talked about buffer encroachment on Watcom Creek. You know, that's, that's something under our forest practices rules we would not be able to do today. So this, this area in question, it has favorable topography, has no critical areas, and the proposed removal is a minority portion of the trees that exist there. As a professional forester and certified arborist, I do believe that forests should be managed. We are blessed in this state with a lot, millions of acres of wilderness, forest land, and that's a good thing. And that's what those lands are intended for, but other lands are intended for management. The primary use of that property at Silver Lake is obviously recreational use. But part of managing for recreation involves managing your trees. This is a renewable resource. Wood is the most responsible way to build and provide consumer products. It's sustainable, and we practice forestry here better than anybody does in the world, and we have some of the most productive growing ground anywhere in the world. So with that, I encourage the support of that proposal. And yes, I hope to be buying some of those logs to provide fiber source to support the dozens of jobs, family wage jobs, that are taking place at Great Western Lumber. Thank you.
Kathy Sable, Bellingham. I just want to comment on your homelessness. I commend the county and city for what you've done during this with the cold weather shelters and what you've been trying to do to the homeless to help them get off the streets. And I'm sure you'll be doing more. I just wanted to comment on the item AB 2019148, the docketing. I just noticed that on PLN 201900006, it's a very broad update and review of code, and I thought we kind of went through that already, I mean, attending stuff. I just wonder if it could be more specific, because when you say Growth Management Act, that's so broad, it's the water, it's stuff. I just am questioning how broad it is. Thank you.
Thank you. And then if there's no one else who wishes to speak, we'll close the public session.
Hi, Marcus D. Good to see you all again. I've always felt like we were rather partners in a lot of what we've been doing, and I never felt more so than when we all worked on the shelter together. Thank you all so much for your service. I'd like to also echo MB's statements about a Housing First model. I think that that's really important, and I hope that we keep that foremost in our minds and look for pathways, the smallest avenues we can find, to make that happen, to make it happen, not just let it happen. Last night, I also want to echo what I, what I said in, in city last night at city council, and, and I found myself quoting the preamble to the Constitution, promote the general welfare. That is our job. That, that level, you know, when a road, when a rising tide floats all ships, it can't be wavy like a capitalist system is. We need to actually provide a leveling so that the little dinghies among us don't get flooded, so that, so that everybody comes up together, at least at a level of general welfare. It was a goal and a tenet of the United States of America before the First Amendment was ever written. So that's something I want to address. Keep that in your minds, too, you know, as, as we go forward, let's, let's do that. Let's promote the general welfare. Welfare is not a dirty word. I also am here to represent, kind of put you all on notice as well. Some of you are familiar with other advocacy that I've been involved with, Open Carry Hammers. I'm the leader of that group. We're a group that is against the open carry of weapons in public by groups in, in our parades and in demonstrations in Bellingham. That falls, that falls also into the Constitution, you know? I mean, people deserve to have the pursuit of liberty and, I can't even go there right now. We all know that one, you're all supposed to know that one. Here's the deal. Open Carry Hammers has directly addressed the issue of these, these open carry guys that are showing up, when I first became aware of them, at the Women's March 2016. It was 2016? Yeah. 2017, excuse me. And they were walking with a banner, with their weapons out, they're loaded. Anybody could, there's 15,000 people around them, and they were not friendly to them. And anybody could have walked up and taken their guns and started anything. And I didn't think that looked right. And I looked at the cops around me, and they're like, and I'm like, that didn't look right to me either. Well, so I started this group to, to try to, because they were holding, they were holding sessions.
30 seconds, please.
They were, they were holding groups in, at Fred Meyer's and the café and stuff, okay? So I went and I, I attended their meetings, and I've been doing that with them. And that's really a trip, let me tell you that. But these guys are insistent, they were at the Pride March, they've been at the Women's marches, they, they need to be controlled. And there is a law in Washington State about that. Please write it down. RCW 38...
Time.
...dot four zero dot one two zero. 38 dot four zero dot one two zero. I already talked to Ritchie about this while he was running for office. He promised enforcement on it, he vetted it through his office, promised enforcement on it, and I have a meeting with him tomorrow, so we'll see how that all worked out. But Bellingham needs to sort it out, too. He can't reach that, it's a jurisdictional issue. It's a jurisdictional issue, so it'll be about their attorneys then, too. So it's on your scope, okay? This is a problem in Bellingham. Thank you.
Amy Glasser, Bellingham, Washington. I'll start by thanking everybody on the council who helped with the, with the past month when it was freezing outside. I'm not representing Homes Now even because, but I didn't have time to change my sweatshirt. Robert Davis died last week. He was 52 years old and was homeless. He was hit by another man at the drop-in center and fell to the concrete and was unconscious from that second until he died. Bill, known to some as Uncle Bill, was a big-hearted man who protected everyone but himself evidently. Michael Billings, age 60, died a couple of weeks ago. He'd been homeless, living in a cardboard box behind the South Hagan. When the freeze began, we encouraged Michael to come stay at a motel or go to the mission. He came to the motel, but the environment was too stressful for him. He left to walk back to his box on two feet with amputated toes due to frostbite in the past. We again asked him if he wanted to go to the mission, and he said he would, he would go to a shelter but not to the drop-in center. We had heard a new shelter was being opened by the city, so we were prepared to get him there, but the shelter didn't open as expected. A few days later, his box, his home, was burned to the ground. No doubt, Michael was trying to either stay warm or read on a freezing cold night. A few days later, his body was found dead in the snow. Could these deaths have been prevented? We'll never know, but what we do know is that the mission is not for everyone and cannot keep everybody safe. What we do know is that the system has reverted back to status quo already. Go to the mission or live outside. Committees will be formed, but not now. You have the money now and the ability to hire a staff person to organize a shelter. I know that you need executive approval for the things that you do, and I implore our county executor to please act now before somebody else dies. Homes Now was able to create shelter facilities and motel vouchers and take care of lots of people, as you heard B say. We continue to do that with a few families who are stuck with no other place to go because they don't fit in the mold of the one place that has motel vouchers, Opportunity Council, and that's just for families with children under 18. Homes Now did it with no money. We did with more resources from our government, a life-saving shelter for couples, families with adult children, those who cannot go to the mission, could be developed within a couple of weeks. It's not a volunteer's job to take care of the citizens, they are, that are in need. We need the government or paid workers to make that happen, and the volunteers will follow. You can no longer hide behind anonymous homeless people who aren't able to make sure the government does its job. We will do that, and we will continue to do that. Rest in peace, Michael Billings and Bill Davis. We're sorry we failed you.
And just as a reminder, if there's nobody else after these two, we will close the open public session.
Wendy Harris. First, I'd like to say I stand in solidarity with Alex and his fight to protect Watcom Creek. It's a very important habitat connection between the marine waters and the federal forests and freshwater uplands, and it, it needs to be kept healthy. I'd like to talk about the trees at Maple, at Silver Lake Park. I was very upset when I read the letter in the Cascadia Weekly by Michael, and I just, I had to embrace it because 600 trees almost brought me to tears. We are at a time where air quality is the biggest threat to people's health, and those trees will save our lives. Trees create oxygen and they absorb pollutants that will kill us, including carbon. And so when you remove that tree, you're not only taking away something that fights climate change, you're releasing all the carbon that's been stored in the ground immediately, so it goes back into the air as a double whammy. And I don't think trees are a renewable resource when it takes 50 to 75 years to regrow them. That's a human life, and I think we need a lot more respect and reverence for trees. If you look at what China and what Russia and some of the other nations that are really working against climate change are doing, they're investing in trees. China spent $8 billion to reforest. Russia is putting aside thousands and millions of acres to keep them in, in an undeveloped state of, with varying degrees of protection. So we've got to, we've got to understand that if those trees die, the ecosystem becomes unhealthy and we die. So to sell out so that you can increase your sales at a mobile home facility is not in the public's best interest. And I would like to note, none of this was put in the public process, in the public notice, and we were told that hazard trees would be removed. I want to see proof that there's 600 hazard trees. I want to see what was tagged. In the meantime, I'm asking you, please, put a moratorium immediately on any removal of trees at that park as planned. Later on, they talk about needing to do this to make more campsites for road width and because stormwater management. Trees are the gold standard in stormwater runoff. Nothing is going to protect our water more than those trees. Please take this seriously. It really matters. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Welcome to one of the few first nights we've had in a number of weeks where it hasn't gotten close to freezing. And believe it or not, this all revolves around climate change. Ordinarily, I would be up here talking to you about the homeless situation in the county. However, regrettably, we've got a bigger problem, which is the crisis of climate change. I mentioned to you in your last meeting in December of last year that if you thought 2018 was bumpy, that you probably wouldn't. You were going to see a lot of things going on in 2019. This coming Friday, primarily by the impetus of a young woman who is now 16 years old that lives in Sweden by the name of Greta Thunberg, who started a movement called Climate Strike, there will be hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of children striking on behalf of themselves and everybody else on the planet because our governments, those in our governments for decades have been lying to us about the severity of the climate Think about that for a minute. The children of the world are having to stand up and tell all the adults in the room that we have massively failed them. How does that impact us down at this level? Well, in the coming weeks and months, myself and a number of other individuals are going to be coming to you and asking you to declare at your level a climate emergency on the county level. We are going to each of the municipalities within this county and across the state and across the entire nation, and it's probably going to spread internationally because we don't trust the individuals who have been at the national and international levels any longer to tell us the truth about what's going on. Courts are out there. Know that the primary cause of it is the use of fossil fuels. While things like the Climate Task Force for the city of Bellingham and the Climate Advisory Group that you have at the county level are attempting to do some good things, it's not enough. And if we are going to survive as a species in some reasonable manner, then we have to have systemic change, and it's got to be done on a mobilization level that approached what was done during World War II.
30 seconds, please.
We no longer have the time to mess with this. Climate change, just like Councilmember Brown pointed out at the city yesterday, is going to cause extraordinary weather events that are going to end up putting tens, if not hundreds of thousands of people out without homes. That's just one of many things that are going to happen. So.
Time.
11 o'clock, city hall, Friday. The students in Bellingham are going to go on climate strike. I invite you to join them. Dana Briggs.
I'm Susan Hansen. I've spoken with you guys before in front of the council on many different things, but I keep coming back to the same thing, so excuse me, and that's fiscal responsibility. So just a brief history of, for me, I'm a C-Home graduate. I've been living on my own since I was 17 years old, so I worked and went to school. I worked at the Viking Twin. I walked to work back then. You didn't have buses that, well, probably still don't past 7:00. So I was able to live right next to the Opportunity Council. I paid $180 a month. It was called affordable housing. We don't have that anymore. I am grown and been successful enough to buy my own home. Now, the reason I'm telling you this is because I don't think we live in that world anymore. I don't think that we have teenagers out there that can go to school and have a job and afford to pay for rent and life. Fortunately, that leaves us with a population that after they leave or after they turn 18, there's no, if there's no money for them to get educated or they haven't had the skill... eighteen, if there's no money for them to get educated, or they haven't had the skills and haven't been able to graduate high school because they're homeless and they have no place to go do their homework, or they come to their tent and all their things are gone, makes it really hard to do homework. And so not only do we have that happening, where we have affordable housing as a crisis, which I think we can do as a community, I think we can start making rules that we can make pockets in different various ways of affordable housing. But also, I want to speak to something else that's far more expensive, and that's called disease and pestilence. And when we have people dying in non-disclosed locations because of the weather, probably near a water source, then it doesn't matter where you live, or how much you make, or if you're homed or not. I'm from the greater Chicagoland area originally. In my town in Chicago, you cannot spit on the streets. You will be given a ticket. That's from an archaic rule back from when we had the influenza epidemic and people were dying in the streets, and it was called disease and pestilence, and it killed thousands, hundreds of thousands nationwide.
Thirty seconds, please.
So if we think we can't afford to home people, or at least find, start finding solutions and deal with this while we have time, disease and pestilence doesn't care if you're out of time, and it doesn't care if you have a home, and it doesn't care where you live. Let's do it now when we can afford to instead of acting in crisis. Thank you so much.
Max Perry, Walton County. I've attended most of your committee meetings this afternoon, today, and this morning and this afternoon. Heard John Hutchings give a great speech on how he's trying to improve his department to improve helping their customers, and I would just challenge the council to do the same, to look at John Hutchings' program and how you might implement that for the council. I would also ask you, and in the committee, the whole, this council, the whole, you know, we're wrestling with the mineral reserves and wrestling with the commissions. How many commissions do you have? How many commissions does the county council represent? How many commissions do you fill? How many commissions does the executive fill? I would guess that probably none of you know the exact number on it. It's a lot. The Planning Commission, we've talked to lots of people on that, the Forestry Commission, Ag Committee, and all those. The common thing that comes up about a lot of those folks that have been on that and are trying to do a good job is we're irrelevant. They bring things forth to the council, and it just doesn't register, doesn't, nothing happens with it. So no wonder that you're short with four people on your mining mineral rights committee right now. That is just an effort and frutility. Was in forestry. It isn't in ag. The Ag Committee right now, I don't think there's probably one or two farmers on that Ag Committee. So that's what your makeup is. How about the Incarceration Reduction Task Force? What's your results on that? I think you've got about a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand, at my last count on it, invested in that group. So what are they doing for you? I would just ask you to take hold of John Hutchings' work that he's trying to do with his department and try to implement here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at the open public session? Seeing none, I'll close the open public session, and we'll move on to other items from Council Finance and Administrative Services Committee. Mr. Sado.
Okay. The first item is AB 2019-147, ordinance amending 2019-2020 Watcom County Budget Request Number Three in the amount of ninety-five thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars. This received a vote of three zero in the committee, and I saw move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none with the clerk, please call the roll.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sado?
Yes.
That passes six zero with Mr. Bird excused.
Next item is AB 2019-140, request authorization for county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Watcom County and Watcom Conservation District to provide Lake Watcom Homeowners Incentive Program assistance in the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. This also received a three zero vote in the committee, and I saw move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure I have this correctly. This is about a contract with the Conservation District, which I totally support. This is not about how much money and where it goes at this point. It's about education. It's about all these things, and hopefully, when it comes to who pays what for what, it will come back to us. I'm sort of assuming.
Yep.
I'm sort of assuming that it will. Okay.
I think I want to make a little clarification. This is, money is not for education. Like, if you are understanding we are giving this money to Conservation District to educate about that, that's not true. This money is, this money, money is a budget which we are asking Conservation District to distribute to the people who apply for home assistance program. This is people like, if I live in the Lake Watcom area and I say I have one acre home and I can do this, so many changes to my yard to improve the water flow or getting fast force in the lake, then I can get, like, I think thirty-five percent of the total cost. If it cost me fifty thousand dollars, then I will invest money and I can get assistance for that. And the Conservation District will determine that assistance and the project and everything that it meets the conditions, and they allow that. That's what my understanding is, and I would like a clarification if Tyler, you, Mr. Schroeder have a different view of that, but that we did discuss in the committee also.
No, actually, we didn't. You talked to me about it afterwards.
Yeah, okay.
Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive. Yeah, that's my understanding. This is a contract with the Conservation District associated with the homeowners improvement program, which is for those Lake Watcom homeowners that want to do some additional retrofitting of existing lawns or areas and make it more stormwater valuable for the Lake Watcom area. This is a contract with the Conservation District. There's already an interlocal agreement with Bellingham to fund for this contract.
Okay, but isn't it also, isn't the Conservation District going to be doing educational outreach and all that stuff, too?
There are a number of other contracts that we have with the Conservation District for.
For that?
Yes.
They are separate.
I was asking.
Further discussion?
All right. I think it saved three zero vote in the committee. I saw move for approval.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those, sorry, seeing none, those all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes six zero with Mr. Bird excused.
The next item is AB 2019-152, request authorization for county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Watcom County and city of Bellingham for Grace program funding in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand dollars. This also received three zero vote in the committee, and I saw move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero with Mr. Bird excused.
The next item is AB 2019-157, request approval for the county executive to authorize the purchase of radios and related accessories from Raycom Corporation, an authorized distributor for Harris RFCD using the Washington State Contract Number 02315 in the amount not to exceed fifty-nine thousand ninety-one dollars and ninety cents. This also received three zero vote in the committee, and I saw move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero with Mr. Bird excused.
The next item is AB 2019-161, resolution celebrating April as a month of sick awareness and appreciation in the Watcom County. Now, this is a resolution. We had a good discussion and was held in the committee and will be presented at the next meeting with some updates and edits.
Thank you, Mr. Sado. The next item up is the Special Committee of the Whole was a resolution docketing Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulation Amendments, AB 2019-148. In this case, we are talking about the pink version up here. This received a motion of five zero with Mr. Sado and Mr. Bird excused. I would like to propose to the council that propose amendments to that, if I may. So if I can pass this down. If you give one to the clerk, that'd be great, too. And this is further to the discussion on the mineral resource lands. We had a discussion today regarding the issue of whether there should be gravel extraction in a parcel that has a petroleum pipeline running through it. I'll do with that one first, and that is, I'm proposing here, a motion to establish what is the right buffer distance between any surface mining operation and a petroleum pipeline. So that's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Frazee, seconds. Discussion. Mr. Domon.
Yeah, I mean, I've got no problem with that. I'm just wondering if that would be something that would already be going on with the 2017 0004 Marine Resource Lands Designation Process that, could we fold these, are they going to be doing the same? Can we just tell, maybe it's a question for Mr. Personias, that when we are doing this designation process, we want them to be coming up with criteria about earthquakes, or do we need to, I mean, I'm happy having a second docketed item for that, but.
Good evening, council. Mark Personias with the Plane Department. That's not something particular that would be in the Marine Resource Lands.
Okay, that wasn't going to happen. That answered my question.
I would just add, though, I'm sure it could be done concurrently. Is that correct, Mr. Personias?
With?
The rest of the surface mining docket. There's another surface mining docketed item.
We would refer that to the Surface Mining Advisory.
Right, and it could be done.
Committee like the other docket items, yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Brenner.
Just a question. I haven't seen this before this minute. Isn't this stuff that they would consider any, I mean, it seems so obvious. Is this something that's not obvious?
I just don't know that there's a, I don't think there's a codified number exactly applying to this use or surface mining within or proximity to an oil pipeline, so.
So we've had other gravel mining zoning where there is pipelines, and they, yes, we have. But, so have they gone through any kind of, any of those gone through any kind of process like this?
Well, when they come in for their permit, for their conditional use permit, then you have geotech studies and specific analysis that sets typically what that setback is going to be.
So we have this, it's just not in the comprehensive plan. Okay, gotcha.
Further discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero with Mr. Bird excused. The Second Amendment was one I also brought up for discussion earlier today, which is I would like to push the ball forward on determining if we are able to do gravel extraction from dry upland areas inside of the thousand-year meander zone of the Noxak River, provided such extraction has no negative impact on salmon habitat. In fact, on that point, I had talked to someone some time ago who said that, to the degree that you reduce the level of the gravel mounds in the river, you could actually lower it to the point where you actually increase salmon habitat. So, and then the further part there is the intent is to reduce the conversion of land currently used for farming, forestry, and wildlife habitat into gravel pits, and second, to safely remove some of the significant sediment load that enters the Noxak River every year in an effort to reduce the flooding and need to build higher flood prevention booms along the river as climate change continues, as climate continues to change. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Mr. Domon.
Yeah, I appreciate the intent, to reduce the conversion of rural land into gravel pits, but I, and I think this would be great to have more discussion of, but as far as amending the comp plan for that, I don't think that's the best way to move this ball forward, to use your language. I mean, I would like to learn more about all this, but my sense is, from discussions we had, we were doing the comp plan update last time. Got the Army Corps, we got all these other things going on there that are going to make that difficult. But, so I support the intent, but I can't support the amendment. But I would like to get another tool to get that, so we're getting more information about this. I'm just not seeing it as a comp plan thing.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, this is the tool to get that information. I mean, I don't even understa, it's like, this is to get the information we need to make those kind of decisions, much as I hate to agree with Red.
I hate to disagree with him.
Mr. Sado.
I was going to say that I'm not totally qualified to see that, where this came from and how it is impacting, but the intention is great, and maybe we should refer this to the Surface Mining Advisory Committee to see that implications of this thing. But we have another layer of mineral resources plan or designating countywide which areas are designated as mineral resource lands, MRL, right? So how many instances that we have where there is a currently, say, a berry farm or a potato farm, and now it has an overlay of MRL? I haven't seen that. I don't know that, right? So I don't know, like, it's a great thing, but I don't know what purpose it would serve. I'm not sure.
Frazee.
I guess I need some clarification on, so we were, I think it was last week or the week before, we had a water meeting, and it was, talked about all the sediment that's in the Noxak. And is the intent of this removing that and putting it on the sides, or making, taking the sediment from the river and using it for the gravel pit or selling it? I guess I don't totally understand this, so if you could clarify.
If you'd allow me to clarify.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay.
So currently, the gravel, the gravel that we use in concrete and road construction and so forth is predominantly taken by digging up farmland or forestry land that is, that has an underlying bed of gravel or sand that was typically deposited from the river, usually during glacial events, tens, hundreds, or thousands of years ago. The problem is, is that as we get those deposits, we dig big holes, those holes then fill up with water for the most part, and they are no longer usable as forestry or land or as farming land. The exceptions are when there is farmland which has mounds, that are mounds built of gravel and sand, in which case, when you dig those mounds up, you actually level the ground and you make it actually more productive soil, provided you put the topsoil back. That's the current way we get sand and gravel. This. This proposal, um, is to take sand and gravel, it's the same sand and gravel that is coming down the Noxack every year in the tune of probably a hundred million tons every year. The problem with that sand and gravel is if it doesn't move fast enough, it starts to build up, and then when you get a flood event, the flood event has much less space in the river to go, so what happens is it ends up rising up above the booms and then flooding the farm fields and so forth, flooding the roads and the bridges. So it's, it has a negative consequence. The proposal I'm saying is if you look at it, if you look at the way the, the river meanders, it will, it will move over this way, it'll dig a channel, and it will leave a deposit of sand and gravel, and then it will move back, and that deposit will then dry out and start to grow trees on top of it. Now, my point is if you take that, that dry area that has trees and brush growing on top of it and you mine it in the dry season, now, this is not hydrologically connected to the river, so it has no impact on salmon habitat. So when you mine that area and you dig it out, you save yourself having to dig out a big pit in a farming area because you're simply, you're not converting that land, and you're removing sediment from the river, which gives the river more freedom to move without causing flood events. So, and also, if you bring the sediment level back down close to where the water level originally was, now you've created more salmon habitat. So that's the logic behind it. Now, this was something that was prevented years ago by policy, I believe by the Army Corps of Engineers and the Department of Ecology. It is under dis, discussion now whether they need to return to what they used to do. And for example, in the Columbia River, if you, if you do a Google earth, earth view over the Columbia River, you will actually see large gravel bars in the middle of the Columbia River, which are clearly being mined in exactly the way I'm talking about. So it's a limit, it's an unlimited supply of sand and gravel that doesn't involve the conversion of productive farm and forestry land. Sorry for the long explanation.
Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, I'd also like to add that, um, as Councilmember Brown said, this used to be done, and the Army Corps came to us and said, oh, it's the end of the world, look at Canada, they've stopped doing it, we must stop. Well, we stopped. Canada realized it was not only not working, it was creating way more unintended consequences, and they've gone back to doing it. So, but we didn't. And this is just, you know, I mean, this is just putting this into the hopper to see what we can, what, what it ends up being allowed to be done, and I think it's a great idea and a long overdue.
Mr. Sedu.
I, I also favor that idea because I remember the discussion we had in twenty sixteen was the same thing, that, that ecology and Army Corps of Engineers stopped this thing. It was a common practice, not only in America, Canada, throughout the world, that that's how they maintained the rivers was, uh, you know, for lack of word, is like dredging. You know, you take these materials which flow from the mountains out and use it for construction, and was done in Watcom County or Washington State very commonly, and then I don't know, remember that when it was stopped, but this is a, a, a good alternative where we see the dry areas when the river changes its path, and it, it, it stays in that new path for thirty, forty years, it's not that it changes every year. And to make use of that in future, when the river changes its pathway, it actually gets a new pathway to do that and, and protects the flooding. So I, I, I like that, that, you know, doing on the dry sandbars, not in the middle of the water, like, most of the sandbars, there's water and there's a little island in the middle, and that's what, uh, Corps of Engineers and the ecology didn't like that, so.
Further discussion, Mr. Donovan.
I, I don't, I think the, the federal concerns about this were what, what Canada was doing or not.
I was there when they, when they brought it up.
What?
Sorry, I didn't mean to, I was out of line.
You know, but I mean, I, I think the concerns are more about the potential that you could do this without any negative impact on salmon spawning habitat, and I know you got that in there, but I think that, I'm, I think the concern has been at the federal and state level that, that can't be done without negative impacts on salmon spawning habitat. So we, we share a different perspective here.
Ms. Brenner.
Actually, what was brought up by ecology and the Army Corps was that it can't be done in the water. What he's talking about is doing it on dry sandbars, not in the water. There is a difference.
Ms. Brenner, I absolutely agree with you.
Oh, my gosh.
Mr. Sedu.
Yeah, I was gonna add that, like, even if we do add it in, into the comp plan, anybody who comes up with a proposal, the contractor or the owner or anybody, they still have to go through the permitting process, and at least it has a chance that somebody can try, but you, we don't wanna mislead people that, oh, this is in our comp plan, so this is allowed. Uh, I think that there should be caution somewhere. People spend a lot of money when you go for permits and their planning and all this, and, and if there is a very little chance of getting approved, uh, people must be cautioned so that they don't go ahead and spend money, oh, it's in the comp plan, so we can do it. So that would be my caution about that, that somewhere that it still requires all the regimen of permitting process.
So I'd just like to add, this, this is only the ask to start the process. Now, if at the end of the, if in, if during the process, there, there comes up to be a significant roadblock that people say, including the Surface Mining Advisory Group or environmental groups, say this is simply not viable, then the project, the idea's gonna die. But I wanted to ask the question, and I also wanna re, remind us, we spent today looking at two small properties. Now, the industry came forward to us with two small properties, one is on, next to the UGA of a city, and the other is, um, it's got a pipeline running through it, it's surrounded by residential areas. That to me told me they're running out of, if they're coming forward with properties that is as unsuitable as those ones are, that means they're running out of land base, and what they're going to ask for next time is going to be even more problematic because they're running out of land base. What I'm trying to do is, is find, see if this is a solution to solve this permanently for the next several hundred years, as opposed to simply converting more and more farmland and forestry land, which, or, or areas that have got housing, so that's the, that's the object of the, the object of asking the question, so. Further discussion on this. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are you adding that cautionary thing that it still has to go through permitting processes?
Well, it has to anyway.
He doesn't even, whether he adds it or not, it's.
It's automatic, it's automatic.
No, no, I mean, people reading the comp plan, they need to have that line in there that, oh, not that after they have spent some money on their plans and, and talking to experts and everything, they spent like five, ten, fifteen thousand dollars, and before they come with a plan, everybody doesn't come to the county first because they say it's allowed.
Right.
I, I, all I'm suggesting is, is adding a line there of caution, that it still will require the, the, the process of permitting, permitting process.
Right.
So I.
No, I, I completely, I can, I completely agree with you, because it's, it's got, the language here does say it has, the, the county code has to be amended, because at the moment, this is not a permitted use, so.
Okay, I'm fine.
And we have to do that by ordinance, so. So I'm sorry, I didn't hear the, who were the ayes? Who were the nays? Mr. Donovan, right?
No.
That passes five, five to one to, uh, zero with Mr. Donovan opposed and Mr. Bird excused. Thank you. Uh, next item up was, there's a foundational public health letter we've been asked to send.
Do the, did we do the regular resolution?
Oh, sorry, we haven't done the whole thing. Absolutely right. So we've had two amendments, both amendments have passed, now we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion to accept the docketing agenda for the year? Ms. Brenner.
Well, there's one item I absolutely do not support, but I'm fine with letting all of these go through the docketing, because I think we get more information that might change other people's opinions, so I'm willing to do that.
Further discussion on the main motion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes six to zero with Mr. Bird excused. Next item up is a foundational health letter that we've been asked to send, um, courtesy of the Watcom County Health Department, uh, requesting the, if the council wishes, I'll read the whole thing out, but in summary, it's requesting that our state public health system, um, be further expanded than it is, so it's basically a request to put more emphasis on money for public health. Any discussion on this? Ms. Brenner.
I just wanna thank Councilmember Buchanan for bringing this forward. I think it's great. I thought you brought it.
No, I just, that's later. It's, it's a different one.
Oh.
But we'll give you credit for it anyway.
I'll take the credit.
So where did this come from? I'm sorry.
Further, further disc, further.
Wait, but this is an inner pocket source.
I've got the wrong thing.
If you want, wish me to read it in the record, I will.
Yeah, read it in the record, because I don't know what you're talking about.
So it's, and it's addressed to all six legislators. Dear Representative, on behalf of the Watcom County Health Board, I respectfully request that the state prioritize sustainable and significant funding necessary to support foundational public health services in this legislative session. Our state pub, our state's public health system has agreed on a set of core public health services that should be available in every community in Washington. The Washington State Legislature has made an initial investment of twelve million for foundational public health services in the twenty seventeen, twenty-nine biennium, representing a one-time partial restoration of cuts to public health services that were made during the Great Recession. With this funding, the Watcom County Health Department was able to increase efforts in prevention, tracking and response to sexually transmitted infections, and work with community providers to increase our immunization rates. Without securing sufficient ongoing stable and dedicated funding for foundational public health services, our community is left unprepared for emergencies, vulnerable to the spread of communicable diseases such as measles, mumps and sexually transmitted diseases, at a risk of food, water and environmental health threats, and without resources to adequately track data critical to identifying and responding to emerging threats. Investing in communities to improve health and well-being of people could also revitalize improved economic opportunity, enhancing prosperity in the community for its residents and businesses. Enclosed, please find a copy of the Watcom County Health Board Resolution twenty nineteen dash zero zero nine, calling on the Washington State Legislature to allocate sustainable and significant funding to support the foundational public health services in all communities and allow public health to continue rebuilding its statewide system with added efficiency. This resolution was passed unanimously by the Watcom County Health Board on February fifth, twenty nineteen.
Now I remember.
Please don't ask me to read it again. All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Second, Mr. Buchanan seconds. Ms. Brenner.
Somebody second it?
Yes.
Okay, um, I, there's no way I couldn't support it, but the devil's always in the details. You know, this sounds like just so good, but again, doesn't always mean that's what we get back from the state. Uh, sorry.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes six to zero with Mr. Bird excused. Next item up is, uh, I'd like to write a letter of thank you to all the volunteers who, um, helped us with the homeless shelter. If the council would allow me to put together a paragraph or two, um, thanking each one of them individually, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Brenner.
Well, I did that on my own.
Did you?
Yeah, and there were, I just thanked everybody in a few paragraphs, and Jill, there were three or four that they came back. Dana, yours was one of them. It, it said returned undeliverable, and it was your address, because I've got it at home, too. So yours was one of the few that came back, but.
With the right email address.
Well, you get it right now. Thank you.
Weird, I even said yours twice, because I thought, that's crazy, whatever. But, yeah, so I thought, I forget who sent us that stuff and asked us to do it, so I just thought we were all gonna, some of us who wanted to, did it.
I, I should add, I wanted to do it as a certificate of appreciation format, that's all.
Yeah, do it again, I like that.
Thank you. Next item up was there? No, there wasn't anything else that was not on the agenda? No, okay, that's fine. Ms. Brenner.
Oh, I want you to stay after the meeting and I'll show you that it came back. I, I don't know what's wrong with your address, something's wrong. Okay.
Gotta be you, not her.
Next item up is appointment to the Watcom County Drayton Harbor Shelfice Protection District Committee applicant Julie Hirsch. The committee advises the Wat County Council on proposed actions and operations related to the restoration of water quality in the Drayton Harbor Shelfice Protection District.
To appoint?
AB twenty nineteen one forty-five. It's been moved to appoint. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Fre, Ms. Brenner seconds, Mr. Donovan moves. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes six to zero with Mr. Bird excused. Next item up is appointment to the Watcom County Surface Mining Advisory Committee, environmental consultant position applicant Sharon Logan. Committee advises the planning department and the council on implementing a surface mining regulatory program consistent with the comprehensive plan, AB twenty nineteen dash one forty-nine. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to appoint.
Second.
Ms. Frazee moves to appoint, Ms. Brenner seconds, sorry. Uh, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes six to zero with Mr. Bird excused. Next item up is introduction items, items one to.
Move to introduce.
Mr. Buchanan moves to introduce, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Donovan seconds, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes six to zero with Mr. Bird excused. Committee reports, Mr. Sedu.
Yes, uh, we had a, a report from the county executive, and I really wanna share with people at home that the bid to replace the doors at the jail came to four point two five million dollars, and that translates to twenty-six thousand dollars per door. Now, there are several reasons for that, is that the, the construction climate and this job not being a common type of job that every contractor wants to jump on it, and the doors have to be taken out first, the jams and everything, and have to be rebuilt, and at the same time, uh, it's a secure environment where every tool, every waste, everything has to be accounted for and watched over and all this, so that does add to the cost. Four point two five million dollar translates to eighty-four thousand man-hours or forty man-years of work. I, I just wanted to bring this point home that not making any decision is also a decision and also can be expensive. So, uh, we are going to, uh, this, the bid or the contract will come up to the council i- in next few weeks. Uh, the other thing we did talk about, uh, I should say, county executive talked about approving the forty thousand dollars for Cascadia Law Group to proceed with getting the final advice on the Cherry Point Moratorium issue, and we did talk about that it has been several extensions of that, uh, moratorium, and, uh, and, and my stance is that let this be the last one, and we need to get it together quickly after we receive back information from the Planning Commission and get it done with whatever we wanna do. The, the other things we, no, that's, that's about it, and then we had a county fiscal report for the first quarter, no, for the last quarter, and, uh, the state of union, uh, state of the county's finances is good. That's the message.
Actually, I'd just, I'd just like to make a comment. So I'm sorry I wasn't at the finance session this morning, but, um, is that confirmed that the doors are twenty-six thousand bucks a piece? I'd like to offer a suggestion. I assume you've put that out to bid for anybody who wished to, uh, respond to it. Given the sheer size of the contract, I'd like to suggest that we spend, someone spends a day Googling for other contracts that have been released in the US in the last couple of years, and find out who the vendors are, and make sure those vendors have been given an opportunity to, uh, bid, um, because twenty-six thousand bucks a door is, it's, seems like, uh, it's a hard number to swallow, so. And I don't want in any way suggest that the county executive or the staff have not done that. done their best with the tools that they have.
As county executive laws, thank you for the suggestion. Our engineers who put the cost estimates together projected the cost of this job at two point eight million plus logistical costs on top of it. And of course, that's just the estimate at that particular time. We had two very quality contractors in Watkin County bid on it, they're both local contractors. Bids were, I don't know, six, seven hundred thousand dollars apiece with a low bidder. I'm gonna say presumed low bidder, but we're proceeding with putting the contracts together with Dawson Construction, good, good local company, for four point, just under four point two five million. And I had an opportunity to talk with the council at Finance Committee that what we're doing is expensive, it's probably twice, over twice the cost of what it would be if we were putting these doors into a new facility, when we didn't have inmates that we needed to monitor and manage along with it. We're also gonna put a 15% contingency on it, because we don't exactly know what we're going to get into. But on the long term, this is the reality of where we were at in our existing facility. It's going to cost us hundreds of thousands, if not millions or more, to be able to work in this facility than it is doing it in other facility. Even if the jail was bigger than what it was right now, that it'd give us more of an opportunity to close wings down, cell blocks down to work on it, it would be of a financial benefit to us. But we're constrained, we're to the point we need to do this. I trust that the people, the bid that we went out, we've discussed this already to make sure that we've got the information out as wide and as broadly as we possibly can as it's relating to the doors and the door hardware. So, but I'll bring that to Rob and I. I don't know if Rob's here tonight, I don't believe he is, but we'll discuss it one more time. But we are going to be bringing the contract forward, asking for the council to transfer another nine hundred thousand dollars into the jail fund, so that we can fully pay for this particular piece of work.
Yeah, and I have no question about the integrity or the competence of the contractor you just mentioned. There have been a fixture in this community for years. The, I'll just say that I'm doing a particular project myself at the moment, and the bids I've got as a one-off project have, there's a, the low bid is around twelve thousand dollars, the high bid is over fifty thousand dollars for basically exactly the same product.
Right, yeah.
And the way I found the twelve thousand dollar bid, which looks like a very competent, very qualified contractor, is I spent hours Googling different phrases, trying to come up with vendors, and I stumbled across this one.
At this particular time, we've put the bid, we've put the bid specs out, we've followed the Washington State bid laws and the bid procedures that we need to do, and for us to basically go into this and to rework the specifications, I believe we'd probably be challenged by both contractors in that. And we either need to award this bid or reject this bid and then go beyond that. So we can't modify it midstream, from my understanding of construction bid processes, public processes that we're in right now. But good comments, I mean, we're trying to do everything that we can to drive the cost down. This has been a very difficult project to scope, even this first phase, and we're well into the second phase, which is involving a lot of the mechanical and safety features of the existing jail, which we're gonna have to start putting millions of dollars away for that also.
Yeah, and where I'm also going with this is that if even that search just comes up with ideas that the contractors we want, that have responded, could look at and say, oh, that's, I can actually do a better job for you at less money, and still make the same margin.
Both of the contractors that have responded to this bid are of the quality that if they knew that that was there, I believe that they would bring that forward.
Yeah, so, anyway, so, I just, twenty-six thousand bucks a door is just a hard pill to swallow. All right, Public Works?
We had an incredible presentation by Public Works Director John Hutchings about how, how we want to treat people better and help them through processes better, and it was wonderful. I mean, you just don't hear about that too much, about coming up with ideas on how to make sure the public is treated with that kind of respect. And I'm not saying it doesn't happen anyway, but that he made it a central focus for the first, the first presentation from his, from the Public Works Department this year, I think is really amazing, so I'm very impressed. We also had the issue of the Deer Creek Water Association, and that was held in committee because there were questions that hadn't been answered yet, so stay tuned.
Special committee of the whole had a resolution docketing the comprehensive development regulations, which we just voted on. Other items, Barry, you have.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. After our last emergency meeting that we had with regard to the homeless situation in our shelter, Director Delahunt and Ann Deacon from the Health Department, and I sat down in the conference room and just brainstormed on how we can be better prepared for this kind of event in the future. And we kicked around the idea about having a subcommittee to the Watkin County Housing Advisory Committee. So the Health Department went off, and they've created this nice proposal that you have before you, and I'll just read a couple excerpts. It's in, yes, a lavender cover. The Watkin County Housing Advisory Committee was established through an interlocal agreement among the seven cities and the county, and it serves as the local task force that provides oversight and guidance over the county's five-year strategic plan to address homelessness. So they are right now in the middle of an update of that plan, it's due to the state in December. So this proposed subcommittee would focus on creating coordinated countywide plan to respond to the needs of people who are homeless during severe weather conditions, which we just encountered in February. The Health Department will staff and facilitate the meetings. The purpose of the subcommittee is to develop a comprehensive policy for addressing severe weather conditions. And you'll see the proposed list of participants. This will be going before the main committee, which is the Watkin County Housing Advisory Committee, in early April, for their approval. The City Council yesterday, they voted seven zero in support of this proposal, and I'm bringing this to us, so we have another, you know, body of support. So I would move that we support this proposal.
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Cannon, second by Mr. Donovan. Discussion, Ms. Brenner?
Now I can say thank you.
You're welcome.
I can also say I commend your work and being proactive and getting the thing done. It's very important, maybe this season is at the tail end, but this is something we should be prepared for. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes six to zero with Mr. Bird excused. Councilmember updates. Mr. Buchanan?
I have another item.
Oh, you have another item?
Yeah. I just want to talk about, a little bit about the Alaska Marine Highway. As you, many of you know, that the governor of Alaska has proposed to shut down the ferry after October, and then they will run only during summer for tourism and all that kind of, those are the most busy times. But it does impact, there are thirty-six jobs, well-paying jobs in Watkin County for this operation, and at the same time, this ferry does serve a lot of small communities in Alaska, and they will lose that as well, because small businesses, it's very difficult for them to drive up to those places from here. And it was a lot easier for businesspeople to buy goods from here, or businesspeople who do business in Alaska, get their truck, pickup truck, other things, on the ferry, go there, do their thing, whatever, one week, two week, one month, come back, and that option will be taken away from them if the ferry stops. So I have been working with the Port Commissioner, Mr. Shepard, and a few other people, and the union, gotten some information, and I am planning to bring a resolution to this council, where we should write a letter to the governor or to the legislature leaders, whichever way, and saying that this is an important link. This is, to me, it's like you can have an eye five from here to Mexico, and then you say, we're gonna shut it down in the middle somewhere. I mean, for us contiguous United States connected to Alaska, this is just like a highway. And it does serve purpose, and highways are not made for, is it profitable or not? Of course, they have their own issues and their own legislature, I don't question that, but I think that we should make an effort, because Bellingham has a age-old connection with Alaska. We are the first town, and this is something which goes back probably hundred years, that this, our commerce, our populations and people, actually, a lot of people who live in these communities, who work in Alaska during the season, or the vice versa. So I think we should highlight the importance of this service, not only from the dollars of profit or anything, and this is, by the way, is a profitable route for Alaska Marine Highway. I mean, they are looking at their total ferry system, not just picking on this ferry. So I just wanted to inform everybody that I'll bring that resolution to the council, and let's make an effort, at least inform them that how we feel about it.
If I may offer a suggestion on that, I know there's been protests locally about the impact on Bellingham of doing this. I think that the Alaskan authorities are gonna be more in tune with their ability to demonstrate what is the negative impact on Alaskans, because I don't think they particularly care what happens in Bellingham. So, and I think there is many, many negative consequences to Alaskans.
May I add that, a couple of things, what I have learned is, is the medical services or surgeries, there are a lot of people who, from Alaska, who want to come to Bellingham or even Seattle for medical reasons, for one or two weeks, and everybody cannot afford airfares and everything else. So this has been a good way for those smaller communities in Alaska who cannot get, it's harder for them to get it to a place in Alaska, it's easier to access Bellingham because of the ferry. So this is impacting Alaskans as much, so yes, you're right, and we will try to highlight that as well. Yep.
Further, other items? Councilmember updates, Mr. Buchanan, Ms. Frazee, Mr. Donovan, Ms. Brenner?
It's all good.
All good, says Mr. Sudu. It's all good for Mr. Brown as well, so. Seeing no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you.